Good morning. The meeting of the Baltimore City Council Public Health and Environment Committee is now called to order. I am Councilwoman Felicia Porter, representing the 10th District and Chair of the Committee. In attendance, we have Council President Zeke Cohen. We also have Vice Chair Mark Conway from the 4th District. We also have Mark Parker from the 1st District. We have Ryan Dorsey from the 3rd District. All right. Before we get started, please take a moment to silence all your cell phones. Today, the Committee is holding a hearing on Legislative Oversight LO 25-0007 Behavioral Health for the purpose of reviewing Baltimore City's capacity to respond to increasing behavioral health challenges, including BCH Baltimore City Health Department staffing, database evaluation and reporting, and alignment of city-funded non-city entities, and visibility of pro behavioral health efforts. Mr. President, would you like to make any remarks?
Sure. First off, thank you, Madam Chair, for holding this hearing. Thank you to Behavioral Health System Baltimore, to colleagues on the council. I really appreciate the opportunity to engage in dialogue with BHSP. We know that our city has significant challenges when it comes to behavioral health and that we are a city that believes deeply in a multifaceted, multi-pronged approach to addressing behavioral health, whether that's substance misuse disorder, whether that's mental health, whether that's any of the issues that arrive around behavioral health. I think it's extremely important that all of our partners are aligned around a common vision to make sure that we are driving toward better health outcomes for everyone. Again, it's why I appreciate Chairwoman Porter convening this hearing and making sure health equity, and particularly behavioral health equity, is lifted up. I'm looking forward to engaging with all of our partners moving forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. And just following up on Council President Cohen's remarks, we have to do better related to behavioral health in Baltimore. I'm pleased to bring Mr. Johnny Fielding, a partner of my office and a partner of the city who's been doing great work in the city of Baltimore for some time now, along with Behavioral Health Systems Baltimore. This is an opportunity for us to reimagine how we do behavioral health, and particularly in the city of Baltimore. We've had some challenges over the past few months related to many behavioral health issues, not just, you know, related to opioids, but effectiveness and quality of substance abuse in recovery homes and clinics, our mission and vision as it relates to our 988 funding and also operations. And lastly, just the normative nature of how people see behavioral health and substance abuse in the city of Baltimore. We have a lot of work to do, and so this is one of many hearings where we will be deep diving into behavioral health, the quality, what we should be doing, what's happening at the state level, but particularly the public-private relationships that's happening along with government agencies and partners within the city as well. So I thank you all so much. We're going to hear from-
Madam Chair, could I add one more piece? Appreciate that, and I really appreciate your framing. I think that for many Baltimoreans, there is a sense that our behavioral health system is fractured and fragmented, and the experience really varies depending on who you are, where you are. Folks may or may not know about 988, whether behavioral, I'm sorry, whether BCRI, Baltimore Crisis Response responds in a reasonable amount of time or not, seems variable. I think Mayor Scott has made it a mission to advance health as part of his public safety plan, and I think this council is firmly aligned with that approach. I think the challenge has been just getting a really clear picture of all that we are doing and making it more user-friendly so that our constituents don't feel like they're being left in the cold or they don't know how to access systems or they are waiting for someone to show up and provide help that may or may not get there. And so again, I think addressing the sort of fragmented approach is really important, and I just appreciate this hearing and this series of hearings so that we can make it work.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Now, we're going to turn it over to Behavioral Health Systems Baltimore for their presentation, and then we'll go to Mr. Fielding next.
Good morning. I think I need- Good morning, members of the Committee, Chairwoman Porter, Council President Cohen. Thank you for the opportunity to present today. I'm Adrian Bridenstine. I'm the Vice President of Policy and Communications at Behavioral Health System Baltimore. Speak closer. Thank you. I just want to echo also what both of you said. We welcome this opportunity to come in front of this Committee and the City Council more frequently to be working together on behavioral health. So thank you for convening this. Thank you for convening it so early on. It's very exciting to have this renewed partnership with you all. So I'm going to go over a couple of things today, just an overview of BHSP and the public behavioral health system. We mentioned crisis response earlier, so I'll present some data and a little bit of the strengths and challenges with our current crisis response system, provider accountability, and then opportunities for partnership with the City Council, of which there are many. So just very quickly, we are a nonprofit organization that serves as the city's local behavioral health authority. We have been operating in this role for decades, and our primary function is to oversee that public behavioral health system. So that is that system of care that is funded primarily through Medicaid and grant services for people who are low income. Baltimore has a full range of services, from prevention to early intervention to recovery support services. We were established back in 1986 as a nonprofit with a Robert Wood Johnson grant. That time, localities around the country were setting up these local behavioral health authority structures, recognizing that you needed that local expertise and oversight to help manage your system of care. And, you know, since then, states and communities around the country have adopted this model. But that's initially how we got started, and then we merged. We had two separate entities, BSAS and BMHS. Some of you may be familiar with them. We merged in 2018 and became an integrated local behavioral health authority. Our core functions are what you see on the screen there. We do a lot of advocacy, both in Annapolis and a little at the federal level and with you all. We manage public funds around $60 million in grants annually that are for services that are not reimbursable through Medicaid. We forge lots of local partnerships with the city, with city agencies, with hospitals, for example, all with helping to promote access to the system of care and manage that system of care. We do a lot of public education. 988 is one of the biggest things that we try to promote, and I've been promoting for years. We've already mentioned that. We also do a lot of public education around the Good Samaritan Law, for example, and harm reduction and overdose prevention. And then finally, we have a system management role that we do in partnership with the State Department of Health, where we oversee those providers and services within that system of care, our system of care here in Baltimore. We, so what you see now is just some more additional context. We are, although we are an independent nonprofit, we are also an extension of the state. We work very closely with the Maryland Department of Health, both the Medicaid Office and the Behavioral Health Office, to oversee the provider organizations and again, promote access to the system of care. More context. So that's who we are, just in a nutshell, but also wanted to give an overview of what the public behavioral health system looks like at a very high level in Baltimore City. So we serve over 75,000 people annually. We are the largest share of the public behavioral health system for the state, roughly around 40% of the public behavioral health system. Statewide, the system serves around 260,000 people. So we're around 75,000 people. What you see on the screen is the breakout of claims data from Medicaid that shows people who were served for mental health and substance use. There's an overlap there. A lot of people have dual diagnoses and are treated for both. Annually, this is, again, this is a Medicaid claims data. We draw, our community draws down around $700 million in Medicaid funding just to support that full range of mental health and substance use services. For what we fund, again, BHSP funds services that are not funded through Medicaid. So we try to help plug those gaps and maximize those Medicaid dollars. What you see is our FY '23 grant funding. So that year was $52 million, and that went to 123 sub vendors, or those are mostly nonprofit providers in the city. And it funds, anything, what you see on the screen, peer recovery services, crisis response, harm reduction, public education and outreach, and some specialty services that promote cultural competency amongst our providers. So again, it's a lot of services that are not reimbursable through the Medicaid system. That's what we try to help plug. And a lot of them also help to promote access to that broader system of care. As I mentioned earlier, we do a lot of advocacy, mostly at the state level. So we've been pretty busy with you all during this time of the year. It's been great to see you down there, Madam Chair. Part of why our advocacy is so focused in Annapolis and at the state level is because the public behavioral health system is a state-driven system. So a lot of policy that impacts our system and our providers and how we operate is set at the state level, whether through statute or through COMAR regulations. So what you see on the screen are our policy priorities. These are things that we have been working on since last year, and honestly, things that we've been working on for a number of years. We adopt policy priorities as an organization on a two-year basis, but things that we've been really focused on is that behavioral health workforce, and we'll talk, that is one of our system challenges. We'll talk about that in a little bit. Peer workforce, again, they're related. People with lived experience. There are not enough peers in our community. We've been doing a lot, and I know the City Council has as well, to help build that out. Sustainability for 988 and our crisis response system. We've made a lot of progress there, but there's still work to do. Behavioral health services for children and youth. I think this is one of the most not talked about enough, underdeveloped areas of our system of care that we can do a lot more to do, a lot more work on. Overdose prevention sites and harm reduction. And finally, that quality and accountability piece with our, within our public behavioral health system. So that's who we are, and again, just an overview of very high level of the public behavioral health system. Now, just wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about behavioral health crisis response. We, as the local behavioral health authority, are very hands-on with managing and overseeing that crisis response system. We've been working to build that out for a number of years, and the national model or best practice for a crisis response system is to have a place for someone to call, someone to come to you, and a place for someone to go. So we've got aspects of all of those in Baltimore City and across the region, but there are still gaps that we need to build out, and I'll go into what those are. So I'll start with the infrastructure before we move into some data. You've heard a little bit about 988. 988 is the 24/7, is a helpline that's available 24/7, 365 days a year. Anybody can call it to get emergency emotional support or get referrals to our system of care or if they just need to talk to someone if they're having a rough day. It's a very universally available resource. We do know, a lot of people still don't know about 988. It used to be a longer 1-800 number that I still don't remember what it is, and it changed to 988 in July of 2022. And that was as a result of federal legislation and change, recognition at that level that we needed to have an easier, easier-to-remember number to help people know where to call when they're experiencing emotional distress. But it is an area that we've been really focused on for the past several years. One of the things that we've done is we've regionalized the 988 helpline. So it is operated by three different providers, and I'll go into who those are, but it serves the central Maryland region, which includes Baltimore City, Baltimore County, Carroll County, and Howard County. We've been able to do that with grant funds from hospitals, grant funds from the state, and it's really helped us to build out our 988 helpline so it can be more available to people. We've been able to expand our staff, and we now have 99 counselors who are available to answer the phone, not at any given time, that's total, and dispatchers answering calls and deploying our mobile crisis teams. We've also been able to expand mobile crisis teams. Mobile crisis teams are deployed through 988. They are a team of a clinician and a peer, someone with lived experience, who go out into the community and respond to someone when they need help being stabilized. Several years ago, Baltimore City did not have 24/7 mobile crisis teams. We now do. It is an area where we're continuing to struggle to build that out, though. We have workforce challenges with hiring with mobile crisis teams. So it is available 24/7, but we do have challenges with making sure we have enough teams available to respond to meet the need. The other thing that we have is open access, or this is where we're working with outpatient mental health clinics who have worked to make some internal changes with their operations so that they can accept walk-in appointments and, you know, appointments for people who next day who need immediate access to a counselor. You can call 988 and get referred to the clinics who are participating in the open access. We've also built out the crisis response system infrastructure and software. One of the things that we've invested in over the, several years ago, was software technology that included a triage tool or tools to help us triage calls as they come into 988, a bed registry, GPS, so that we can deploy mobile crisis teams and track them in real time where they are out in the community. So this has helped us, again, with being able to make real-time referrals to beds that are available in the community and know when they're available and what type of bed. Other areas where we've been able to grow and build out is with community engagement. We recognize, and our community engagement has been really focused on promoting 988 as the central way that people can access our system of care, but also get information and also know when to call, especially if people are experiencing emotional distress. So one of the things that we've done, one of the more exciting things, I think, that we've done is we've been working with community leaders across Baltimore City. We call them our 988 ambassadors. They are leaders in our churches, they are leaders in our PTAs, who come and work with us. We train them on what 988 is and how to talk about it and how they can be promoting it in their communities. And they go out and they have found really creative ways to spread the word about 988. So we will continue that. Honestly, I think it's work that needs to continue on in perpetuity. It's so important, community engagement. But it's one of the things that we've been really focused on is promoting 988 because we know, still, a lot of people are not aware of this phone number. National survey data still shows that around a third of adults don't know what 988 is or when they should use it. So collectively, we have a lot of work to do to still spread the word and make sure people understand what it is and when it can be helpful to them. We also have sobering services or the Crisis Stabilization Center, which I'll go into in more detail. We have been promoting 988 through ads throughout the city. Hopefully, you have seen them. Again, just another way to help spread the word. And then finally, as I mentioned earlier, we have this regional accountability, regional structure, and through that, we've been setting up an accountability structure where we're working with all of the providers within the crisis response system and working with them to improve services. So 988, I mentioned earlier, we regionalized. It's operated by three providers. You see them on the screen. Baltimore Crisis Response, who's been the historical adult crisis services provider in Baltimore City, and then affiliated Sante and Grassroots Crisis Intervention. The three organizations work together using the same technology and platform, and that is how they came together to operate regionally. One of the things that we've also been really focused on is working with our 988 helpline and our mobile response teams to better deploy our resources. And what you see on the screen there is a dispatch tool that we use. It's a triage tool that is used by the 988 helpline providers and the mobile crisis team providers to determine when we need to have mobile crisis teams come out. We always need to be triaging the calls that come into 988. It gets around 50,000 calls annually. Some are more acute than others, and this is the tool that we've been using for a number of years and working to build out. So now I'm going to go into a little bit of data, and some of this I've touched on a little bit. What you see on the screen now is 988 call volume for the past year, and it is broken out by 988. You can kind of see on the screen, 988 Here to Help hotline. That was, maybe some of you are familiar with it. That was the old phone number that we used to use before 988. The number is still operational, it will continue to be because a lot of people still know that number and still call it. So you'll see the, which you can see on the screen. We still get a fair amount of calls coming in from here to help. But we see our 988 calls growing, which is good. That's what we want to be seeing. And then we have 911 diversion, which I'm sure you're all familiar with. We have calls that come through 911 or transferred to 988 if they're a behavioral health call. So that's the breakout of those different colors within the columns there. But you'll see, we get around 4,000, 5,000 calls a month annually. We are still doing well with answering those calls. The 988 helpline picks up the call anywhere between 10 seconds and 17 seconds. So we're really proud of that. We want to be able to answer the call quickly, especially when people are calling and they're feeling distressed. That's when we need 988 the most, and we want to be able to make sure that we're staffed to answer the call quickly. The other thing that we want to do is, to the extent possible, try to resolve as many calls as we can over the phone or with the least restrictive response possible. So over the phone, helping somebody stabilize or having mobile crisis team come out. And you'll see with our data, again, this is the past year, that we are meeting that goal. We are able to resolve most calls over the phone. A fair amount of calls also come in where they need no intervention. Those are mostly people calling just looking for information about resources across the community. Now, we'll move into mobile response. And so this is, mobile response, we've been building out over the past year in terms, building out in that we've been adding the different regions to our deployment model. So you'll see around October, it really jumps up. That's because we added Howard County in. But I'll focus on Baltimore City. They are the light blue. You'll see a majority of the mobile response teams that are deployed are in the city. And looking at the map, you'll, also, we're just going to show you where our teams are going out. Most of them are going out in the downtown area. And you can kind of see that, looking at the screen, it's the downtown area. We've had 1,163 completed visits over this past year. And again, looking at the outcomes for our mobile response team, you'll see of those that are deployed, most are resolved on the scene. Again, that's what we want. That means we're helping people to stay in the community and we're not transferring them to a higher, more expensive level of care. So the Crisis Stabilization Center, I mentioned earlier, is another aspect of our crisis response system. This is another area where we need to continue to build this out. We call it the Crisis Stabilization Center, but it is not a fully-integrated crisis stabilization center. It provides sobering services only. So we do not have that mental health aspect, although a lot of people served in the Crisis Stabilization Center come with underlying mental health issues, and their issues are addressed. But sobering services are what is provided, so they have to meet that eligibility criteria. That is an area, again, there's a gap, and we'd like to build that out. It operates 24/7. It's in West Baltimore, in the Old Hebrew Orphan Asylum Building. It accepts walk-ins, referrals from hospitals, and EMS drop-off. And then the other aspect of our Crisis Stabilization Center services is that when people are discharged, they are provided with 30 days of case management post-discharge. And the goal of this is to help someone make sure that that connection to the ongoing care happens. So this case management piece is a really important part of it. We're not just discharging people and saying, hey, go figure it out on your own. They have someone to support them and make sure that they're getting to their appointments, adhering to any kind of treatment regimen that they might have, at least for the next 30 days, until they are securely transferred to another type of provider. What you see on the screen is just, again, our utilization for the Crisis Stabilization Center from July of 2024 to the end of this year, and it's relatively stable. We do see, tend to see more of an increase in utilization in the winter months, which you're starting to see at the end of the year. So now I'm going to shift to provider accountability. As I mentioned earlier, one of the responsibilities of the local behavioral health authority is to work in partnership with the Maryland Department of Health to oversee our providers and the system of care. So we do that in a variety of ways, and there are a variety of tools that are available to us to ensure that there's provider compliance. One of them, I think you heard me mention earlier, is COMAR. A lot of the provider quality and compliance is set for, both at the federal level but mostly also at the state level through COMAR. Another area is through Medicaid. Our Medicaid Office has what we call an administrative services organization. That's the payer for Medicaid services. We also work very closely with them. They have a, also, their quality, quality expectations for how providers are supposed to operate. So we work with all of these different tools available to us to ensure provider accountability and that things are functioning as they should, and monitoring things as well. There are certain providers where we have more direct engagement with than others, and those are providers that we fund directly. So any provider that we fund directly, which you may have, I'll draw you back to what I mentioned earlier. We fund 123 providers just last year. Those are the types of providers I'm talking about that we have more direct engagement with because we have a funding relationship with them. We have regular audits of those providers, regular site visits, and throughout the year, monitor those providers to make sure that their quality is where it should be and that they're meeting the service outcomes. That's part of their funding agreement. There, and then there are the rest of the providers in the system of care that we also are responsible for overseeing in partnership with the Behavioral Health Administration and the Medicaid Office. So there are around 300 different programs that are funded through Medicaid in Baltimore's system of care. We work with the state to do kind of the same thing. We monitor those programs. We're brought in when the state requests us to come in to do a monitoring, whether it's of a corrective action plan or performance improvement plan. We also will proactively go out and do site visits for new types of providers when they are coming into the system of care with the Behavioral Health Administration, who licenses the providers at the state level. We also will investigate complaints, and again, we do that in partnership with the state. What our role is, is we get the complaint, we will investigate it, we will make sure, you know, find out what, the complaints kind of run the gamut. We get a variety of different types of complaints, but we'll check for compliance with COMAR, certainly investigate further the complaint if there are any community issues, and then we make a recommendation to the State Behavioral Health Department on what we think next steps could be. And that could be, you know, suggesting a provider go on a performance improvement plan. It could be corrective action plans. But our role is to make a recommendation, and then the state will tell us, yes or no, we want you to move forward with this recommendation. So we have to do a lot of that in partnership with the state. But I do want to highlight complaints are really, a really important way for us to be able to engage with providers. It is one of the ways that we can get out and learn more about the provider. So we're always encouraging community members to make a complaint, whatever it is, because it helps us have that documentation so that if we do need to do something proactive or reactive, we have that documentation to make the case to the state to make further action. And then the last thing we do is investigate and track critical incidents. So those are things such as death at a program, suspected abuse or neglect or any kind of staff misconduct. Again, we will take that information and do that investigation in partnership with the state and make a recommendation what next steps should be, and they will tell us, or they will prove what those next steps can be, and then we move forward with that. Since we were talking about complaints, I just wanted to let you know it's very, we try to make it as easy as possible to get complaints to us. You can file a complaint on our website or use that QR code, and you can do them anonymously or not. We do encourage, if you're comfortable or if people are comfortable, to give your information because our complaints team will follow up with you to get more information. So just, that's always one of the benefits of providing your information if you're comfortable. I know I've worked with many of your offices. You've brought issues to me. That is okay, too. I will put the complaint in for you. So we want them, we really do. We want the complaints to come in. Again, it gives us an opportunity to engage with a provider. And we also recognize that we can't be everywhere and that your constituents know what's happening in your community. So it's a way for us to partner with your community as well. So related, also related to provider accountability, I just wanted to highlight some recent actions at the state level that are impacting our system of care. And this may be familiar to some of you. So last year, or I mentioned earlier, the State Department of Health, Behavioral Health Administration licenses providers within the public behavioral health system. They have been- They have been doing a review of their data and have seen an increase in the certain provider types you see on the screen. So psychiatric psychiatric rehabilitation programs for adults and children, intensive outpatient treatment programs and partial hospitalization. So to do a deeper dive and better get a handle on why they're seeing this increase in these provider types within the system of care, they went to CMS, the Center for Medicaid Services at the federal level, and asked if we could have a moratorium at our state level on these types of provider types. That started in July of last year and has been extended through now. It was set up initially for six months, and it was extended now through June 30th of 2025. So what the state has to do in this period of time is complete their analysis of the data to figure out why they are seeing this increase in these levels of care. And they have to revise the COMAR regulations. And all of those things need to be done before this moratorium can be lifted. Those are expectations set on the state from the federal government. So they are currently working through that. The COMAR regulations have been drafted. They have not been put out for public comment yet that we have seen, but we've been told that's coming in spring. Some of the things that we think are positive that are going into the COMAR regulations are more expectations on providers, and this should help to over time improve the quality of care. So I wanted to highlight that now. We can talk about it a little bit, but I do see that as a potential opportunity for us to partner with the city council on to make sure that those regulations are more rigorous and can be used to help drive improved quality across the system. Another recent state action, and this is very recent, as in next, it was announced last week, and it is coming in a couple of weeks, is MDRN, which is a state level entity that oversees recovery housing, will no longer be approving authorizations for recovery housing, and that will start March 31st, 2025. The reason for this is that the state is running out of funding. They've also seen a growth in this program, and they do not have enough funding throughout their end of the year to support it. So they have, again, put the pause on new authorizations for this program. And I'll just highlight, this is a program, again, that is not funded through Medicaid. It is funded through state state grant dollars. It is managed through the ASO, which is the payer through Medicaid Services. So that's one of the benefits of Maryland's system is the ASO blends Medicaid dollars with state general dollars. So we don't have a role in overseeing that as the local Behavior Health Authority. But I did just want to highlight this action because, again, it's it's a pause on a certain provider type. So now to wrap up, just opportunities for partnership. There are lots of opportunities, I think, to partner with you all. There's there's data sharing, there's, you know, working to make sure that people know how to get complaints into us. So I'm just going to highlight a few, but this is not, we're not limited to partnering with you all in this ways. But one of the ones that's just really important that I wanted to highlight now is because we are in the midst of the legislative session is we can advocate together. And it has been fantastic to see the city council come out and take stances on things like the school behavior health. What we see here is a chairwoman who was down with us a couple of weeks ago for overdose prevention day, working to promote or pass or move forward legislation on overdose prevention sites. So that's one example I think that we can partner together on. And then two other things I just wanted to highlight. One specific event that's coming up that we've restarted within the past year is what we call Community Safety Day, or you may have heard to heard it called in the past as Drug Take Pack Day. It is where we set up in communities across Baltimore, and we encourage people to bring unwanted medications that we can safely dispose of. So we've done this, we did it twice last year, once at Carroll Park and the other time at the Y in Central Maryland. And we had a lot of people come out. Did want to promote that we have one coming up, and we would be happy and welcome the opportunity to help share this event with city council. It's on April 26 at 10, and it's in ABC Park. And then finally, nine eight eight. We are still looking for ways to spread the word about nine eight eight. We would love to partner with your offices or other partners within your district to help spread the word. We have developed a lot of materials that are available online. You can see them on the screen there. You can get them on our website. We also will print a lot of stuff and are happy to bring it to your offices or bring it to anyone in your district if you want. So any way we can spread the word around nine eight eight, but we would love to partner with you all on that as well. So I think that is the end of the formal presentation, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much, Adrian. Just want to thank you for your presentation. I want to first go to Mr. Fielding first, and then colleagues will go through a series of round robin questions for both of the panelists. Thank you. Oh, you can sit right there if you want to press the button and it turns red. Yep, and there you go. And just please state your name for the record.
Johnny Fielding. Will you guys bring up the presentation? All right, nice. So good morning, everyone. Again, my name is Johnny Fielding. I am a Baltimore City resident, and I'm also a I'm a product of Baltimore City Public Schools. And I am the co-founder of Leading by Example. I want to say thank you to the council for giving me the opportunity to share a little bit about my organization. Special thank you to Councilwoman Porter for giving me the platform. So Leading by Example, we are a integrative behavioral health organization and family strengthening institute that was founded in 2009 by my business partner and myself. I would be remiss if I didn't talk about the conceptualization and the inspiration behind the organization, which which we were inspired to create this organization just from a from a byproduct of our experience growing up in East Baltimore in the 90s in the middle of the crack epidemic. And, you know, growing up in those communities, you know, myself, I grew up in the Dolly Park community. My business partner, Till, he grew up in a community near Madison Recreational Center. And again, you know, we didn't know each other during that time, but we were in a parallel process of growing up in these communities. And one of the things that really stood out to us just by being residents of the community is that we didn't see a significant amount of what we what we framed as tangible hope in the community. And that was members of the community that exuded positivity and was was whole and healthy. So, you know, we felt like that was a void in our experience growing up. So what we believe is, you know, sometimes when you're looking for a solution that's not there, that presents itself as an opportunity for you to become the solution, hence Leading by Example. So we endeavored to support individuals and families with becoming whole and healthy because, at the end of the day, we believe that if individuals in the community are whole and healthy, they can be a part of whole and healthy families, which can be a part of whole and healthy communities, which can be a part of a whole and healthy city. So that was the, you know, the 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 idea that we came up with Leading by Example. And again, when we were when we were when we when we began in our careers, one of the things that we noticed is that the organizations that we were working in and working with, a lot of the leadership, a lot of the executives, a lot of the founders of those organizations, they weren't actually from the helping discipline. So again, when we when we set out on this endeavor, we didn't have a lot of business astuteness, but we did have the information from a practical standpoint to actually deliver the service because that's what we did. So at this point, I'll transition to my PowerPoint. So again, Leading by Example, our mission is to improve the quality of life of children, adults and families worldwide. Next slide, please. So our our service overview, again, at the foundation of our service lines is our outpatient mental health clinic, where we provide individual individual therapy, group therapy, family therapy. Now, again, the the family therapy piece was really important to us because, again, one of the things that was important for us is in our helping philosophy is that we don't work with individuals in isolation. When we see an individual, we see a family. That's why we wanted to coin ourselves as a family strengthening institute because we believe that, you know, ultimately, we wanted to create our service lines, not just for the individual that we're services, but we wanted to have a robust service line that provided other services for the individuals in the family. Next slide, please. Next, we also provide psychiatric rehabilitation for both minors and adults. This is a unique service line that that's that's structured essentially to be an adjunct service that's connected to individuals who are receiving therapy services. So if an individual is in therapy and they may need some additional support, we actually hire practitioners and paraprofessionals to actually go into the homes and go into the communities to actually work with these individuals. And we're and we're coordinating that care with the therapist, so the therapist is also getting a different lens and a different level of insight into what's actually happening in the community and in the house with this young person or this adult. Next slide, please. We also offer a service called Therapeutic Behavioral Services, affectionately known as TBS. This is an interesting service line because this service line is for young people between the ages of five and 20 years old, and these are individuals who behaviors have elevated to a point where they're at risk of being removed from the home. So these are individuals who are at risk of being placed in higher levels of care like, i.e., hospitalization or residential treatment centers. And what we're tasked with doing is going into the home from a behavior modification standpoint, working with the young person, working with the parent, and really trying to salvage this placement. In addition to that, this is also a service line designed for individuals who are transitioning from higher levels, higher levels of care like hospitalizations or residential treatment centers, where they're transitioning back into the community. And we're tasked with going in and trying to harmonize the household just to ensure that that client is not removed from the home again. Next slide. Care coordination. This is a relatively newer service line that we offer, and we're actually partnered with BHSP to provide this service. So that's actually phenomenal to to have these guys here today because, yeah, 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 great job, great job. So and again, BHSP has been a phenomenal partner for us, but this is one of the service lines that we offer for young people. And what we like to frame this service line is almost like a community-based service milieu where we're coordinating with the young people who, again, have mental health challenges. But again, the the one of one of the the fundamentals about this particular service line is we're coordinating with the the other individuals who are in the client's service milieu of providing services. So we're getting everyone together, and we're having meetings, we're working with the family. The family is leading in the process with developing their goals. So this is a really, really, really unique service. We're excited about it. We are one of few providers that are that is contracted with BHSP to provide this service in Baltimore City. We just brought on a actual business consultant as well to really help us really market and grow this particular service line right here. Next service, next slide. Residential Rehabilitation Program. So this is a service line that we're also partnered with BHSP in providing as well. We are working with transitional age youth where we provide residential services and housing services. We are licensed to provide services for eight transitional age youth in Baltimore City. And currently, I believe that we have five residents in this service line. So we currently have three bids available for this particular service line. And again, this is, you know, individual, this is a powerful service line because, you know, traditionally with with individuals who are in care or in the system, they age out of the system at 21. However, we can continue to provide residential services up to the age of 24, I believe, for this particular service line. So for individuals who aren't fully developed and actualized yet to be functioning independently in a community, this gives us an additional three years to work with them to get them prepared. Next slide, please. Targeted Case Management Program. So we don't provide this, we we're not contracted to provide this service in Baltimore City. This is a service that we're contracted in Baltimore County and Hartford County. And again, this is working with the adult population who have mental health issues. And what we're doing is coordinating, ensuring that they have all of their entitlements. This is individuals who who may be at risk of homelessness. So we're helping them support support them with security appropriate resources for housing, whether it be SNAP benefits, whether it be birth certificate kids, social security cards, just really trying to ensure that they have their entitlements in place so, you know, we can provide that level of support for them. Next slide, please. And again, we offer services in Baltimore City, Baltimore County and Hartford County. And again, with our residential services, those services are located in Baltimore City. And again, BHSP has been a great partner with us for our care coordination services, our residential rehabilitation services. In addition to that, we were also a part of the open access. We're also a part of open access as well for the nine eight eight helpline. Thank you.
Thank you so much to the both of you. And colleagues, I just want to give you a framing of why I asked these two organizations to sit before us today. There there is a perversion of the harm reduction pathway and model here in in Baltimore City. And we know what some of these issues are. We've heard them before as it relates to substance abuse in recovery homes, provider availability, making sure that we actually provide the care and treatment needed for addiction in our communities. And it hasn't worked, you know, it hasn't worked. We've seen time and time again where there have been mishaps as it relates to these behavioral health arms in the city of Baltimore. I want to applaud both of you for for doing the work. It's now going to be more even more important to kind of dig deeper into a lot of these pathways, a lot of these funding capabilities, a lot of these providers that are regulated and unregulated within our city to make sure that they are not causing undue harm and make sure that they're not causing undue harm in our communities. So, Mr. President, did you want to start off with the first question before I get to mine, Rowan?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. And just for clarity, are we doing just one question or like a line of questions?
No, so you're doing two questions each, but you are the president, so you can ask as many questions as you like, sir.
Appreciate that. I will adhere to your rules. All right. First off, thank you both for presenting. Thank you for your work. Thank you for yours. Adrian, appreciated the presentation from BHSP. I saw a lot of inputs and outputs. I didn't see a lot of outcomes. I'm interested in whether you all can present outcomes as it relates to treatment, how folks who interact with the systems are faring. I noticed on one slide, 52 and some change million dollars in grants, 123 sub vendors. You list all the things that you all do, including peer support, harm reduction, 269 contracts, et cetera. And I appreciate the breadth of work that BHSP is involved in. I think where I've struggled is in understanding the outcomes. Who is being helped? How are they moving on a continuum throughout the system? And that is what I'm seeking.
Yeah, you've so we have data, we have, how do I answer this? The contracts that you mentioned are programs that we have direct access to that data, too. So we could, if you wanted to learn more about care coordination, we could pull the data on that. Where we are limited is that Medicaid claims data because we do not have direct access to that data. That's the state data. We can request it, and we can certainly request it to show kind of the more system-wide piece. But if you're interested in a certain level of care that for any of the ones that we just funded, yes, we have direct access to the data and we could present that.
Yeah, I mean, that would be helpful. I think to the chairwoman's point, I think what we are seeking to do as a council is to close some of the gaps within the systems. And it's challenging to close the gaps when we don't know what the outcomes have been at a micro or macro level. And I think we have clearly a number of really strong interventions in our in our city, but I'm just not clear on how they connect with each other, how, what is actually happening. And I'll just say, anecdotally, I've heard just a really mixed bag when it comes to utilization of nine eight eight, whether a crisis response team shows up or not. And so getting really clear on the outcomes. And so getting really clear on the outcomes would be extremely helpful. Um, and, and would appreciate that in a subsequent hearing. Um, I, I'm also just interested in the Chair touched on this, but we hear a lot of concern about providers, particularly in the substance use space. You all, one of the things you lifted up was provider accountability. Yet I would say generally the accountability seems to be uneven or in many cases lacking. So can you help me and the council understand what accountability looks like from B H S B, uh, when it rel- as it relates to treatment providers?
Yeah, um, so I want to go back to the crisis piece too. We could absolutely go, the, the crisis data is another data set we have direct access to. And we could do a deeper dive on that for sure at a future, um, a future meeting. We do, and I also just want to acknowledge that, um, the point you made around mobile response teams coming out. We know that that is an area we need to make improvement on in terms of the availability of teams so that when people call, a team is available. We, we do have data showing that sometimes when people call and need a team, we don't have a team to go out for a while. Um, that, some of that's related to the challenge I mentioned earlier around hiring and workforce. But the other challenge I didn't mention is the funding for mobile crisis teams. It's shifted to the Medicaid fee-for-service and the rates are not high enough to support that service. So we have some, some advocacy and some work to do there to see that improve. But it hinders our ability to be, ability to build that piece out for the system of care. So it can be, uh, more consistent. So I do want to thank you for lifting that up, um, and just acknowledge that's an area that we need to do some work on.
Yeah, I, I, just briefly on that, I know that was a priority of, I remember a couple of council, uh, budgets back. We, we had fought really hard to get, I think a million and a half dollars more put into, directly into B C R I because of, you know, what you mentioned around the fee-for-service, med- you know, the, the, there not being enough reimbursement. And so I, I think just on that, what would be helpful is to understand what, wh- wh- where the gaps are and what it would cost to fully staff that program. Um, I, I, I just, I, I don't think we should be doing anything half in, half out. Um, because I think what that sometimes does is create frustration among residents who say, hey, you know, Zeke, you told me to use nine eight eight and that there would be a team deployed. I used it, the team didn't show up, the person continued to have a crisis right in front of me. And as a result, I'm not going to do that ever again.
Yep.
Um, and so it just, I think creates a negative feedback loop for our communities. So I, I, I would just appreciate sort of understanding at a deeper level where the gaps are and what it would cost to have an effective, fully effective system.
We, uh, we've done some of that analysis and I'd be happy to follow up with you. Um, yeah, we've got, we've got a number. Um, but it, also, yeah, totally recognize your point, right? If people call and they want that service and it's not available or they don't have a good experience, they're not going to call again. So it's a very important point that you're making. Um, your other area, I think, was around, uh, provider accountability, I believe. Um, so provider, uh, uh, I'll just back up. We have, I think I mentioned earlier, several tools available to us to ensure provider accountability. We have to ensure compliance with federal and state regulations. Mostly, um, we lean, lean on the COMAR regulations, which are being updated as, as we speak to add some more teeth to them for the different provider types. Um, we use that to ensure that providers are provoling, uh, providing quality service. And we go out, um, both proactively and reactively. The providers that we directly fund, we are more engaged with, uh, because we have a direct funding agreement with them. The providers that are mostly funded through Medicaid, and there are a number that are funded only through, or, or they, they don't have a funding agreement with us, but they're funded through Medicaid, we have less engagement with. Um, we will engage with them when we get, uh, complaints. Uh, we will engage with them around when their, um, Medicaid audit happens with, with the A S O. Um, and we will engage with them when there's around critical incidents. Or, and then finally, I guess the third, the fourth one is when the Behavioral Health Administration, um, asks us to go out. So, um, I, I do want to acknowledge that part of the system of care, we are in a more reactive position than proactive. Uh, we are much more proactive with the programs that we, we directly fund. And, and the reason for that is limitations in our authority. The authority we get from the state, as I mentioned earlier, they need to approve even our complaint recommendations. When, when we do go out and do an investigation, we can't just go and do it on our own. So there's limitations in our authority there. Um, and then, um, you know, we, we don't have the staff to be as proactive as we would like to be in terms of accountability and complaint staff. Um, so that's kind of how I, I would break out looking at, um, our role as it relates to, uh, provider accountability. We are looking forward to those COMAR regulation updates though. I think they're well overdue.
No, I, I appreciate that. I think there's a well-documented, uh, history of treatment providers not meeting expectations. And in fact, in some cases, contributing to further harm and further, uh, substance use disorder and all the rest. I think that it's been documented extensively in the press. But I would say if you ask any single council member in front of you, we, we all have places in our district that are just not good enough. Um, so Madam Chair, if I could just make two data requests. Um, one is for, for a subsequent hearing, that outcome data, um, specifically any metric that you all list, uh, I would love to see outcomes. Um, and, and, uh, not just outputs, not just how many people are being served, but what the actual outcome is. Um, and then two is follow-up on the, a- as you mentioned, there's a lack of staffing for crisis response. I'd, I'd love to, for this committee, just understand where we are now and what the funding gap is or what the staffing gap is to get to it being effective for the residents of this city.
Yep.
Got that, Chair? All right, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Um, and so just to dovetail off of, um, what the Council President mentioned, uh, Adrian, I want to go in, I want to talk about the any willing provider statute. So one of the major issues that we're experiencing, um, in the city of Baltimore is the any willing provider statute. Can you talk about, just, just, can you talk about that statute just for education purposes for the committee? And I'll ask my follow-up question after that.
Sure, um, yes, I, and I would also acknowledge, I think that's a challenge within our system of care as well. Um, so the any willing provider, uh, part is how Maryland set up its Medicaid program. It is, um, established through COMAR. I think it's actually through statute and through COMAR. Um, and, and, and the COMAR regulations outline what a provider needs to do to be able to operate within Maryland's system of care. And they need to do several things. Um, they need to be accredited by one of, uh, Maryland's approved national accrediting body, at which there are four of them, CARF, uh, J C O, uh, you probably know better than me.
Joint Commission.
Um, so th- there's four of them.
Mm-hmm.
He could tell you exactly what's on our government. And so they have to be accredited by one of these national organizations. Once they have that accreditation, they, you know, also need to work at the local level to get their, their, uh, use and occupancy and, uh, fire permit for whatever space they're going to operate out of. Um, and then they come to us at the local level to get what is called an agreement to cooperate, which is, um, a piece of paper without a whole lot of teeth that just says you must work with and coordinate with your local behavioral health authority. Things like you must let us come in and investigate complaints and critical incidences, for example. Then they take that whole package and they go to the state and apply for licensure. If they have all of those things, the state cannot withhold their license. The state Behavioral Health Administration has to provide that license. Um, so it doesn't, it doesn't, um, factor in for the fact that you may have a lot of this certain types of providers within your community. You may have enough. It, it doesn't factor in any of that stuff, so it makes it really kind of hard to plan for your system of care. Um, but that is what the any willing provider.
And thank you, yeah, thank you, thank you for providing that. And, and colleagues, um, and Mr. President, this follows up on your, um, provider accountability question. When we're talking about, um, how and which providers we're using, that any willing provider statute is where, um, I believe that we need to, to target at the state level. Also, the agreement to cooperate. Um, last Maryland General Assembly, I, um, worked on a bill with Senator Hayes, sent a bill eight 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 that actually added enforcement capabilities to the Good Neighbor Agreement, the agreement that's needed for community-based organizations and neighborhoods to actually open in their neighborhood. Uh, well, some, some, sorry, substance abuse recovery homes, they need that to open within their neighborhood for their licensure. So when we're talking about evaluation criteria, that may be an area where we work with the state in the future to make that, to make more enforceable language to that for our local behavioral health authorities. Because if you notice from the presentation, it simply just said oversight. Oversight does not include enforcement. And that's one of the, the things that Adrian and Daniel and I have talked about, at least for like two years now, about how we can enhance and provide the local behavioral health authorities enforcement. Um, Adrian, I want to actually go back to something you, you talked about, um, as it relates to, um, as it relates to, uh, just the overall community needs assessment and how that is in, how that is attached to the licensure when you're going and applying at the state level. One of the major issues that we're having is that it's kind of the chicken and the egg. Um, in Baltimore, we have an oversaturation of substance abuse and, and behavioral health and mental health clinics in the city. And so if you have a over-saturation of them, providers are going to come. But if you have providers here, the clinics are going to come. So it's really like a chicken and an egg. How are you all navigating that community needs assessment? I, I truly believe as a, as a scientist myself, that it needs to be more stricter. It needs to have more outcomes associated with it. So talk to us how you all are navigating through that because that's something that we as the council and councils offices can really, um, impact a little bit more by providing those kind of nuances to community that may or may not be seen at the state level.
Yeah, I mean, you highlight, um, a really good point around the cha- uh, not just another area, it's a challenge with the any willing provider system. One of the things that, so one of the things that we've requested for the state to change in COMAR is that before a provider gets licensed, is that they have to meet with us. They, we have to have a site visit and that we, again, we request this, I don't know if they'll do it, um, that we, we would like to be able to have a say, like, if we need this provider type or not, right? If we need another P R P or if we need another O T P. So we've requested that that language be added to COMAR. Um, we will see if it's included. But I think if there were extra steps for a provider at the local level, it would help to increase our engagement with them and then us get a good handle before they start to begin to operate and see them before they start to begin to operate. But then also say, we have enough of this provider type. We don't need access to another P R P. We need access to this instead and, and try to work the system that way.
And you bring up a good point. And this is, I know the administration is, is, um, not present, um, but this is for, just for record. I would love to see something, um, within the legislative priorities, maybe our priorities for the next, um, Maryland General Assembly where we are working hand in hand with behavioral health systems so that we can get that sort of enforcement capabilities from the local perspective, from a legislative perspective, and even drilling down to a council's perspective um, in relation to, um, the licensure of, of these, uh, places in our districts.
Yeah, can I, I, I just said, we would welcome that. And, um, I will also say there is a state, uh, entity that represents local behavioral health authorities. They also have been working on that issue, so we could bring them to the table as well and build some power for that.
So, uh, as a mad scientist, Adrian, you, you in my brain. So, we're, we're, yeah, we're, you're in my brain. Um, Mr. Fielding, I want to go next to you about, um, I want to talk with you about accreditation bodies. One of the major issues that I'm having is CARF accreditation. Um, it seems to be a very low-level accreditation that, um, many people get, but it's not really, um, it's not really followed up on. It's not really providing the quality and standard of care that we need. Can you educate us about that CARF accreditation and also some of the higher-level accreditations that some of these providers will need to have in the next couple of years?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, and, and in my experience, you know, fortunately for my organization, we, we, we have joint, uh, joint commission accreditation. Um, and again, when we were presented with the opportunity to choose joint commission versus CARF, we, we chose joint commission because we thought that it was a more stringent, um, accreditation body. Um, because at the end of the day, joint commission is an accreditation body that accredited, that accredits, um, hospitals. So that's a, a higher level of, um, scrutiny in the accreditation process. So that's, that's, that's the one that we chose. And what we've experienced from a provider standpoint is that when you're running into the instances where there is a, um, a large, uh, instance of fraud and abuse and when you're looking at those actual providers, which you do find is that they have, um, CARF accreditation. Again, I think that inherently in the process, there's, um, you know, there's, there's some conflict of interest there. Because again, you know, when, when the state passed the regulations that required individuals to have this accreditation, that's when you've seen the influx of providers, new providers entering into the space where previously that requirement wasn't there. And at the end of the day, the Office of Healthcare and Quality did an amazing job. It was a representative, you may be familiar with her name, Wendy Kaneley. This was years ago. She did a great job at, uh, you know, creating an energy within the city and within the state of, um, not allowing any type of provider enter into the space. Um, once the state shifted to the accreditation body, naturally accreditation bodies, the motive for them is to ensure the integrity of their accreditation, but it's also to, to create revenue for them. And the more providers that enter into the system creates more revenue for them as an accreditation body. So that's what's at the gate now.
Yep.
Um, that's, that's, um, preventing individuals from getting in and getting out. That's the biggest jump is the accreditation. And what happens is you have, uh, consultants from around the nation that come into Maryland or come into the state and just draft up whatever the regulations a person may need to pass accreditation from a policies and procedures standpoint. So you would have a provider, if you can afford to pay for a consultant, you naturally get access through the gate.
Thank you so much, Mr. Fielding. And colleagues, just for full disclosure, um, you know, Mr. Fielding and I have been talking for a few months now about what that, um, what that local accreditation would look like. Um, understanding that CARF is kind of the national standard, but we need something at the local level, um, that is more enforceable, that's, uh, tailored to, uh, localities, but also making sure that we're not having this churn of money just coming into our communities, um, based on, uh, if you can hire a consultant or not. It should be focused and tailored on whether you're able to provide the standard level of care needed for individuals, um, in the city as well. So, um, colleagues, I'll open the floor for questions. Yep, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I appreciate you calling this oversight. I think, um, this is a particularly, I think, a difficult issue for the city because I think we, although we've been doing this work for some time, I think, um, comprehensive efforts to, um, be partners as a council is, I think, a pretty new idea. And I think you're perfect for the job here. Um, I wanted to follow up on a couple of questions that both the President asked and the Chair asked uh, regards, uh, with regards to, um, rehabilitation programs and specifically around quality of care. Um, I've been thinking a lot about this issue as well. And I'm curious, and this is for B H S B, which I really appreciate your guys' work. You guys have been really great partners. Um, ha- have you guys thought much about, um, the good from the bad? The treatment centers that, um, have shown good outcomes, that are great partners, that you would refer your family members to if they were dealing with addiction versus the ones that maybe you wouldn't send your family to? Uh, and what are the, um, traits and features of those centers, um, that you would identify as important? Um, I ask the question because I think to the question that we're talking about here around any willing provider and standard and quality of care, um, we have a rough sense, but I think I've struggled to find a clear delineation of the good from the bad. So would you mind thinking about that?
Yeah, we, we have been thinking about this, um, idea for years on how you could, um, I don't want to say rank, but how you could assess, like, have, have some standards, some universal standards in how you could assess if a provider is meeting universal quality standards, if the provider is meeting those quality standards, and then making that information publicly available so that people can be more informed and we can be sharing more on what we're doing with accountability. It's complicated, uh, we are working on it. We, we have, we are going to elevate it and prioritize it more. Um, it is not, yeah, it is complicated for, for a variety of reasons.
Okay.
One, um, we haven't, the state hasn't defined kind of what those quality standards of care are. So we'd want to align with that. It doesn't mean we have to wait for the state. We oftentimes at the local level can move faster and do things first and then the state learns from the. We oftentimes at the local level can move faster and do things first, and then the state learns from the localities. The other challenge is how would we go about doing that assessment of providers? And that's where it gets a little complicated, but we are thinking it, we are actively thinking it through.
Yeah, there, this is an issue I've been trying to wrap my hands around. I've been in conversations with the chair about, and in conversations with multiple treatment centers about how we think about this. And I think there are a number of opportunities. I think the conversation around CARF, JCO, and the Joint Commission, and the other mysterious accrediting body that we can't seem to think of right now, they do a lot of research, and a lot of that information, when you get accredited, is available in a report somewhere. And I sort of wonder if there are ways for us to adopt within our system some of the components that are captured in that report and make available to the public as a sort of daylighting of sorts of the strengths and weaknesses of giving treatment centers. I can tell you, there is a dance that I think every single one of the council members have either done or will do soon around treatment centers within our district and because we know we need them. We know that they are absolutely necessary toward addressing the addiction problems that we have within our city. But there is also, I think, a long and tainted history with treatment centers that were not operating at the highest value or a highest capacity. And our neighborhoods feel that long history, and that's when you get to the not in my neighborhood prospect. For those that have been in neighborhoods and operate well, people, they don't even know they're there. They're almost invisible in some ways, and in fact, they actually solve a lot of problems. They reduce a lot of the issues that we may have in the street. And so I think that that dance is delegate, and I think the focus around quality of care and developing standards within our treatment centers is a real opportunity for us. And I think in partnership with the state, certainly at the licensing level, because we don't license today. And that's something, you know, the chair has talked about. But I think also in a sort of peer-to-peer perspective for treatment centers, they don't like the treatment centers, the good ones that don't like the treatment centers that don't operate well, and they don't want them associated with the work that they do. And there's no way to differentiate the good from the bad. So one thing I'd love, if you guys would be willing to provide as a follow-up, is some details on how you might go about differentiating the good from the bad. How, if you were trying to figure out a treatment program for your brother, your sister, your mother, what are some of the traits that you would look at within those programs? And are there, I don't know if you guys get access to the accrediting bodies reports that they have to do in order to accreditate some of these institutions, but are there components of those reports that we can use to further think about those pieces?
And Mr. Vice Chair, is that an official request?
That is an official request.
If I may just provide a quick comment, Dan Rabbit, Policy Director at BHSB, for the record. It's really, it's hard to differentiate and to assess substance use treatment providers because there's such a high rate of relapse, even with strong providers and treatment. The one intervention that is consistently very effective but is not consistently offered is medication, specifically for opioid use disorder. There are treatment providers that have connections to prescribers and incorporate that into the treatment they provide. There are also treatment providers that discourage it, that stigmatize it, that maybe even force people off of medication when they go to their, when they enter their programs. And that's okay right now under regulation. We have, in the Comar revision that Adrian mentioned, we suggested that actually that should not be allowed, that any licensed provider must, cannot discriminate against people for taking medications for opioid use disorder and need to put something in place so that it can be maintained when they enter. So that's just one area, like where the science is super clear. But we're happy to look at other elements as well to kind of get a more comprehensive view.
I appreciate it. Thank you. And the next question I had was about the Crisis Stabilization Center. I had the fortunate opportunity, maybe two years ago now, to go out and see the incredible work you guys are doing there and see it firsthand. One, I appreciate the progress that we've made and the stories that I heard while I was able there to go see it in person. I had a couple of questions about our capacity. So first, how many beds do we have there right now?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five beds. And so we're seeing somewhere just under three hundred or around three hundred visits per month for those thirty-five beds. And then I was, in the data that you guys provided, you had just over sixteen hundred total admissions and thirteen hundred were unduplicated. These are one-time and they never came back, folks that came to visit these beds. I thought that was really, really interesting, and then two hundred and five repeat customers. It had me questioning, do we at all follow up or keep up with some of the folks that have come through the program to see if they latch on to other, if they latch on to other resources or if they found some stability after they came to the stabilization center?
Yeah, so the part of the discharge plan for people, when upon discharge, is they get thirty days of case management to help do just that piece, to make sure that connection to the ongoing care in the community sticks. So we do provide that. We haven't done an evaluation, so to speak, like a formal evaluation of the program, but we built that aspect into the program because we, the research shows that if you don't help support someone upon discharge, even if it's from a hospital or like any kind of acute care, that connection to the ongoing care and that follow-up to their provider in the community is more challenging. So that's why we built the thirty days case management into the program.
Yeah, I think that question is right in line with the question the council president was asking around outcomes and when we make those touches.
Yeah, I could get that.
I'd be very interested to see how that works out. And then one last thing, and this is-
Is that a formal request?
Yes, it is.
I'm sorry, if you could repeat that, because Trey has to get it.
Sure. If we have any data or information on follow-ups after folks leave our stabilization center to see how, you know, the outcomes from those interactions with those folks. If they're accepting other services or if anything that we have there would be helpful.
Yeah, I think, I think we have, I think we have that.
And last thing, if it's okay, Madam Chair. I think one of the things we've talked about a lot in the Public Safety Committee last term was chronic mental illnesses that we see in folks and how I think over the last few decades, with changes in healthcare and the way that we are dealing with chronic mental health issues, those folks often fall through the cracks. And I would say in the grand scheme of things, it's probably not all, maybe it is a lot of people, I just don't know. But I know I've had a couple of instances where folks are dealing with schizophrenia or things like that, and our systems just aren't really positioned to help that person. We'll have initially a police response, we'll try to have them committed or whatever the case is, and they end up right back at home. And for the family in that household and the neighbors in those areas, we just didn't really have the right response. I'm curious, I ask the question because with the stabilization center, I'm not sure if that's the method that we would use or if there are other ways that we think about folks dealing with chronic mental health issues of that sort.
I think that's a great point, and for me, it highlights more work, more preventive work we can be doing. Some models that other cities have done, and we do this in Baltimore too. It's just not, not probably as robust as it could be, but we well checks. So we know there are people with severe mental illness, and at times, people with severe mental illness are actively symptomatic and they need, you know, a checkup or change in their medication, like things like that. Not something that will require them to go to like an inpatient facility. Some of that could be managed, certainly through, you know, a connection with a primary care office or an outpatient mental health clinic, but if somebody doesn't have that kind of connection, well visits. So there are lots of cities, and Denver is one that has a really good well-check program where people are, I think they use a mobile crisis team, like team that goes out. They have a list of people who are in that kind of eligibility category of severe mental illness, and they do well checks, proactive visits to check in on people. Something like that, I think, would be helpful to, and I view that as more prevention to address the challenge you're bringing up.
Thank you.
It's not, I will say it's not funded through insurance or Medicaid. So it would be a grant-funded type program unless we got Medicaid to pay for it, but.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Councilman Torrance?
Hi, Adrian. You guys know quite well, I represent West Baltimore. We are inundated with bad actors. I will say that I have, to be frank, I have currently a bad actor who lost his medical license for dispensing medication through a nurse that was not qualified to dispense medication, but still got certified to actually open up a center in my district. I also have had, in the last year, six new facilities open in my district in neighborhoods where community members have articulated that they wanted local retail and people open up shop without giving notification. They've gone through BMZA, they've gone through all these various other bodies. And my neighbors, and I say this as someone who respects the law, understands the law, and how we have the Fair Housing Act, we have the ADA, those acts have been now used against black neighborhoods for predatory purposes. I say that as the person who had to launch several zoning investigations into PHI for the fact that they were opened up. For me, my question is, what in Comar can you give us to empower us? Because I can no longer tell my neighbors, we can say no, but they still show up.
Yeah, I mean, I think right now we can't say no, and that's the challenge. One of the things that we've requested to go, or two things that we've requested to go into Comar, and this would be before a provider is licensed, is that we at the local level need the opportunity to have a site visit so we can go out and see if this is a provider that should be setting up and to be able to say to the state, yes, we recommend them, or no, we don't. That is currently not in Comar. I think that would help us with a couple of things. One, with managing the system of care, if we had that level of authority. But even if they didn't, like even if they said, no, like we're not going to give you that level of authority, if we knew ahead of time and could go in and do that site visit, we could let you guys know. It's backwards right now. We don't know about a new provider setting up until we get the agreement, and then we find out months later from the state they've been licensed. And then we let all of your offices know. You've probably seen emails come from Dan. If that were flipped, we could at least let you know ahead of time and communities could respond and organize appropriately.
Yeah, because the negative appeals are frustrating. I'll give you an example. I have one organization, we're doing a negative appeal now, who is opening a substance use location for methadone in the thirty-two-hundred block of West North Avenue, and I had two mass shootings there, right? You're opening up in an open-air drug market on purpose to benefit from the said market, right? And this is where I struggle because in the areas where I have the high prevalence of them, I've had open-air drug markets. They're purposely targeting open-air drug markets, not areas where I see people who are traveling and need the actual substance use services. And it's becoming noticeable to the point where I can tell you, I now have a new section of the district that is off Pennsylvania Avenue. Three locations have opened up on Pennsylvania Avenue. And despite the fact that the neighborhoods have said, we want this to be the black arts and entertainment district. They set up, and one provider literally told me, this is the place, I chose this place because I can make the most money here. Now I want to serve the most people, I can make the most money here. And this is right across the street, actually it's a block away from Thurgood Marshall's house, right? His childhood home, you're a block away. And this is the main stead for young people to commute to and from school, from Mount Royal or over into another portion of the district for elementary school. But you put it right there, despite the violence that we have suppressed there. You're now adding to it. I'll give you an example, in another portion, we had, I'll put it this way. We've had another portion of the district, we had a housing crisis, right? Right now, I have providers who are telling my staff and others, we chose this location because we can put the most people in there, right? Because in West Baltimore, we have large housing stock, and if I can buy a five thousand square foot house for a hundred thousand dollars due to bare minimum renovations and I can benefit from it, it's problematic. So I would love to have a conversation about assisting you in language for Comar because I think the Comar language needs to be empowering to not only you, but also the communities because our communities want it, we just don't want bad actors.
We share that. I agree. I can hear your frustration. And I will say, we would welcome that when Comar comes out, I will let you all know. Maybe that's something we can partner with the whole city council on because we do want more authority. And in the meantime, Councilman, let's make complaints. Come to me. Come to me. I'll even put them in for you. That is one way to get us out there if there are issues with the providers in your district.
My question, and the other thing is, this is the other-
And last question, sir.
My last question. Sorry, apologies. I want to know, like, I think that one of the things that we should think about is measuring the amount of public services that are used to do it because a number of the bad actors, I can count the number of calls for service that go to fire, police, and in addition to the actual DPW claims. Because I had literally one house where they were dumping outside the property. So I would be happy to discuss that because there is layered. I have a facility around the corner from my house. I never knew they were there. We love them. They clean up. They're neighbors. They walk the neighborhood. We talk to them. I see them when my children are walking with me, we're playing. It is different when a provider and the people want treatment versus people trying to profit off of people.
And Ms. Councilman Torrance, I will also elevate our legislative oversight hearing related to opioid use and substance abuse and recovery homes. That's really the topic and drive because everything that you're saying is absolutely accurate and correct. One of the major issues that, you know, just BHSB is running into is that enforcement capability. There is political well within the Maryland General Assembly. I think that there's an opportunity. We just need to show a united front, that this is something that we care about, supporting BHSB at the state level. I'm going to next turn to Councilman Parker.
I wanted to add something.
Oh, yes, Mr. Fielding.
So I'm a part of an organization called CBH, Community Behavioral Health of Maryland, and CBH is the largest provider-led advocacy organization in the state of Maryland. I'm actually the board president of that organization. And we did a white paper to provide our swing at responding to everything that you guys are outlining in terms of being able to distinguish between, you know, savory providers and unsavory providers. We have all of the data points. We have the points where the regulations change. So I'll disseminate this white paper to anyone who's interested in reading it. And again, it captures a lot of the interventions that we're seeing from a provider standpoint that the state can utilize to support with governing the services. Because again, you know, like Adrian is sharing, in terms of looking at the regulations, the regulations, that's onefold in terms of an intervention. But I can share with you as a provider, I know what's going to happen with these new regulations targeting specific service lines, like for example psychiatric rehabilitation. And we're just going to not provide the service because I know what it's going to entail in terms of the level of scrutiny that's going to happen with authorizations. And again, they have to do something, but they can't. I think maybe the solution is being more tailored in your approach to scrutinization of licenses or authorizations. Because again, once the level of scrutiny rises to a certain level, we're just going to bow out of the service line because what it actually requires is from an administrative burden just to navigate to perform the service, you know, it's just not going to be worth it.
Thank you, Mr. Fielding. If you could submit that via testimony and colleagues, we'll make sure that we send it around to everyone so that everyone has that information.
Yes, I can submit this as well. In addition to that, I also have data points around the behavioral health workforce shortage that the city council president was referring to as well. We, currently, the state of Maryland has thirty-four thousand, thirty-four thousand individuals providing, working in the behavioral health services. We have identified that by 2028, we're going to need eighteen thousand more positions, and we're forecasting by 2028, fourteen thousand are going to transition from the workforce. So that's going to leave us by 2028 with a thirty-two thousand member workforce shortage of our industry. So I can submit that as well.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. I really appreciate those data points. Councilman Parker?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. This is for our friends with Behavioral Health Services. I have just a few questions related to, two questions. to, two questions, two questions related to the 988 response, the crisis response, the mobile crisis response that happens. One is both in terms of the people answering phones, but also in terms of the teams which are deployed, what's the capacity to work with people who aren't speaking English? What's, how do you all handle that? What's that look like? What's your experience been? There could be numbers, there could be qualitative, just initial reflections.
So the national 988 system has a Spanish-speaking sub-network. So when someone calls 988, they can press 2 to go to the Spanish sub-network. That's a national network though, so when you go into that network, you're no longer like locally driven. And there's only one provider in Maryland that's a part of that network, which is actually in Prince George's County. If they don't press 2 and they go to 988 and they get routed to our local regional helpline, there are some counselors that are bilingual, but it's a sort of, it's not part of the system. There's also the language line, which is the main way that folks would, would access care, which is not always the best for complicated issues like emotional health, but it's pretty standard for whether you're going to a hospital or 988 or any other part of the healthcare system.
With the, with the language line, that's a simultaneous translation service?
Yeah, like, you know, the person would, they access the language line and the language line provides interpretation back and forth.
Right, exactly. It'd be great to get data on how many folks are accessing language line and what, what languages are being involved in, recognizing that some people are pressing 2 and getting routed nationally. But, but at least for locally, it'd be, it'd be good to know how that's being used. What about in the crisis response teams, when people are going out on the street? What's, what's built into the capacity of our teams to work with people who aren't speaking
We have to get back to you about like how many of the teams are bilingual. I don't know that there's a, do you have?
I don't know off the top of my head, I'd have to check.
No, I appreciate that. It'd be, be great to know that capacity. My sense then from that response is that, and I'm not trying to like be accused or I'm just trying to like describe what I'm hearing, is that if there is multilingual capacity in Spanish or any other language, it is accidental, a good thing, but it's accidental, it's not an intentional part of the city saying, we need to have this capacity when we deploy, right? Or like this number of staff at any given time in a response situation will have this capacity. It's not, there's, there's nothing like that written into or baked into the system.
I think that's fair. I think it's preferable. I know hiring practices are preferable for bilingual, but it's not like a requirement.
Gotcha.
It's so hard to staff those teams too, so getting bilingual staff that are comfortable to go out at various times a day, like.
Yeah, so granted that, granted that it's not part of the official, I appreciate the chairperson's clarification, given that that's not part of the official plan or strategy at the moment, it would be good to know among current staff, so an official request, among current staff, what is our multilingual capacity there?
Yeah, definitely. And we could build it into, I don't know if we have built that into our estimate for what it would cost, but we could build that into what it would cost to maybe train and get more bilingual staff.
My second inquiry was with the responses, and again, I appreciate the map showing where the responses, the on, the deployed responses are taking place. And also how different counties are coming online, that was really helpful information. Is there a sense of, do you all have data for, or do you distinguish between the, a response that you deliver like on the street versus in someone's home, right? So like I'm thinking like from, from an ambulance perspective, right? Like I might call in about a person having a mental crisis on the street versus I called because my, my, my child is having a crisis inside my home. Is that, is that something that you, that you distinguish between in terms of your responses?
I, I know we don't have that in the aggregate, if, like the location, it would probably be in case-level data, like if they responded, like in some, like went in someone's home, is that kind of what I'm hearing versus like addressed them while they were out on a sidewalk?
Yeah, so I guess what I'm trying to tease out is, is how much of this is, when people are calling 988 and you all are responding for a mobile situation, how much of it is, is like, how much of this is kind of responding to unhoused folks or folks who are in a public area? Like are people calling, are you all responding in these kind of like public spaces versus people calling about a crisis that's occurring within, within a home or an office environment? I'm just, it gives, it gives me a help, it helps me understand what you all, what your teams are doing, but it also helps me understand how people are using the system and maybe who isn't using it for what.
Yeah, I mean, so the teams do both. They will, and they also respond in schools as well. They've, yeah, I mean, they, they do both. I'd have to look and see how we break it out. Do you know if we look at unhoused too? We might need to get back to you on this, see how they parse the data out.
I know that the data we look at monthly is not, like, so we do data analysis like internally and that level of data is not usually presented. I don't know also if you're getting at this, Councilman, but there's also a distinction between whether you're calling for yourself, whether you're calling for like a friend or family member, someone you know personally, and whether you're calling for, as a bystander, like first person, second person, third person calls.
Sure.
We also, like, I think that might be easier to get than like whether you're going inside a home or not, but.
Yeah.
We can check.
We can look into that as well.
I'd love to hear what's available on that front. Thank you.
Is that an official request, sir?
It is an official request.
Okay. All right, Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to echo the sentiments of you and the Councilmen about the provider and group home situation. When are, when are the Comar regs coming out? Because Adrian, we talked about this months ago and they're still not out.
I know. We've been told spring. I mean, the state has to get them through the, BHI has to get it through the state revision process to submit to CMS and they have to do it.
Right, it doesn't have to go through the General Assembly, it has to go through the regulatory framework.
It has to go through the regulatory process, yeah.
So we don't yet know.
No.
Okay, well, I think that's important because, you know, you would acknowledge that some of this is backwards, my colleagues have talked about it, we've talked about it. So, you know, if there's anything else that we can do to influence that kind of now, especially if they haven't, you know, finished it, you know, please let us know because I think that would be helpful.
Yeah.
As, now that I think about it, my senator is actually, they have a special committee now on the regulations. Okay, well, that's a different idea, I will go talk to her. So my other question was around, and this is a new field for me, so you'll have to forgive me. But I guess I'll stick with, unfortunately, and it's so sad, there are members of our community that it's clear they can't take care of themselves. And they're either, you know, experiencing homelessness or, you know, something. And I am, I'm not, sometimes it's crisis, right? But other times it's simply just, they don't want anybody's help, they don't care for that, that, you know, and I have, you know, residents like that in my district. And I don't know what to do for them because, you know, we, I don't know if it's institutionalizing, if it's, you know, just continue to reach out to try to, you know, address it. There are times where they may not, they may be harmful to themselves or others. You know, I, I want to just make sure everybody's got a decent place to live and if there's a way that we can figure out how to help in that regard, I just don't know.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Yeah.
So let me repeat so I can make sure I heard you correctly. There are members in our community who just have complex needs and you're not sure how to refer them or?
They don't want to be referred.
They don't want to be referred.
They will not take help. They will not, they're not even.
Yeah.
Aware of the fact that there may need to be something, you know what I mean?
Yeah. I mean, you can certainly come to me or Dan, we often take these requests. So where I'm going with this is you can come and, the system is complex, especially for people with complex needs who are, need to have some relationship engagement with a provider, that takes a long time. We can certainly help with trying to identify the right team to come out. BHSB has a clinical services team that works specifically on really complex cases because they have so many complex needs and often require lots of different types of services. I think the challenge you're pointing at, when I hear you say like they don't want help, is that the relationship engagement piece is really hard work and can take a really long time to get someone to build trust to want to come into services. We do have teams that are specialized in that, but it can take a long time to do that engagement and relation build, relationship building with somebody, especially if they have a severe mental illness and they're distrusting of systems and providers. But we, we can certainly help.
Yeah, I mean, I'll talk with you specifically about two in particular that I'm worried about. And just trying to figure out the best way to help them, but also, you know, anybody else who ends up being in that situation. Especially since there's also the, you know, part of what sometimes happens with folks who are experiencing homelessness as well. So I'm just trying to figure that part out. This is, again, not my field, so I'm trying to continue to learn about that. But I'll, I'll come to you then and we can try to work together on it. I, you know, it's not, it's something that I don't want to arrest anybody and put them in jail, like that's just not the answer, you know? And, or do an emergency petition where that just ruins the trust because then they get arrested and taken to the hospital and then they come out because there isn't services for them or something like that. So there's a whole host of issues here that is a crisis point, you know, but also just the, all the other systems that are around, there just aren't any, it seems like. And I think that's something that we need to just figure out when you were talking about the whole system, how that actually works for folks that just are falling through the cracks, are refusing help, don't really know, but at the same time could be a danger to themselves or to others.
Yeah, no, I completely agree with you and I really just want to lift up what you said around not wanting to see someone go to jail or call police. Hearing that gives me a lot of hope and I'm, I'm hearing more of that from constituents and even from state-level offices. I'm not going to name the person by name, but we did get, we were able to help someone in South Baltimore and it came to us through a state legislator's office and the constituents said just that. They didn't want to call 911, but they didn't know what to do, so they came to their local behavioral authority and we were able to, to help. This is growing sentiment of not wanting to rely on emergency rooms and police, I think gives me a lot of hope and I think it's a lot of shifting that we want to be seeing happening in Baltimore. And I, some of it's the leadership of this body here trying to just shift that language and, and approach with your constituents. So I just wanted to lift that up because I think that's great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All will now shift to public testimony. I know that that's a little bit abnormal for legislative oversights, but I thought that this is an opportunity for the public to continue to speak to us. We do have David Castro, it doesn't look like he is in the chambers. No? Okay. Would anyone else like to provide public testimony? All right. All right, colleagues, definitely, and just want to make sure, any virtual testimony? Okay, thank you so much. So we'll conclude on public testimony. Just to wrap up, again, this is a very, very near and dear conversation to, to my heart, my work, and I know the work of this committee. There were a lot of complex questions that were asked today. We have a lot of work to do on this committee and for colleagues, I definitely encourage you to dig deep and find some sort of collaboration with your area of expertise. I know Councilwoman Ramos, we are talking about how housing and health is so intricately related. Council, Councilman Parker, we've been talking about homeless services and how that is explicitly related. I know Councilman Dorsey, we've been talking about how the built environment is extricately related to health and public health. And so we have a lot of work to do and so this is an opportunity for us to continue the conversation and make sure that we are working in lockstep with not only our partners, nonprofit partners, but also our for-profit partners as well, because they also have a seat at the table. So, thank you for everyone attending. This hearing is now adjourned.